So, Commissioner.
Okay. I believe we do. I've seen everybody's face flash on the screen. So with that, I think we're at seven o'clock right now, or within a few seconds. Called the meeting of the Capital Planning Commission meeting, or Capital Planning Commission to order. And I'd like to remind everyone that this meeting is not physically open to the public. Commissioners and staff are meeting via Zoom, and there are several ways for the public to watch and participate. Information on how to join the meeting using Zoom on a landline or mobile phone, along with how to submit public comment during the meeting tonight is available on the website. If we could put that up on the screen, please, as to how people can participate. There we go. So you can dial in by phone. The numbers are there. And once you're an attendee, if you raise your hand as a participant, just wait to be unmuted, and you can make your comments at that time. Okay, with that, maybe with the roll call, please, Edna?
Sure. Commissioner Christensen?
Here.
Commissioner Newman? Commissioner Westman?
Here.
Commissioner Wilk?
Here.
And Chair Ruth?
Here. And now we will have the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance.
allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, under God, and of justice for all.
That's one of the reasons we need to meet live. Okay, so do we have any additions or deletions to the agenda, Katie?
This evening, we do have additions to the agenda. For item four B, the appeal, there was an email that came in yesterday from a neighbor, as well as additional photographs. There was a letter that was attached to the original staff report. The photographs were not put into the packet by accident, so those have been sent out in a rata to the Planning Commission. Planner Sisanto will have those available that he can pull up when the neighbor speaks. But two items came in for item four B. Thank you.
Thank you, Katie. And I failed to mention our technician tonight is Noel Cobby again. And thank you, Noel, for broadcasting us to the members of the public. Now's the time for public comments for any items that aren't on tonight's agenda. So if there's anyone out there who wants to bring something before the Planning Commission tonight that's not on the agenda, we'll give you a few seconds to respond.
Chair Ruth, I am not seeing any public comment on our email this evening, and I'm looking at the Zoom participants, and there are no hands up currently.
Okay, thank you, Katie. So that brings us to item C, Commission comments. Are there any commissioners that have any comments tonight?
I do have one.
Commissioner Newman?
Yes, I wanted to just briefly bring up the issue of the taqueria that's located on the Esplanade. They came in sometime earlier in the year for a sign permit after being busted. And we granted them a sign permit on the condition that they kept the walkway that's required by the Coastal Commission open. And they're having a lot of difficulty doing that. So I'm wondering if there has been any interaction between them and the staff in that regard, or what the plan is.
At this point, we can send them a courtesy warning letter, and then if they don't comply, we can bring the conditional use permit back to the Planning Commission.
Yeah, I mean, I know it's been difficult for restaurants, but I mean, that's been the rule from the beginning there. It's been a condition imposed for many years by the Coastal Commission. What they do is they put three or four tables out there, and then the people, as soon as they sit down, they kind of just spread out into the walkway, and it's essentially closed off to the public. So they know it, but they, it's just difficult, I guess, for them to comply with, just like the sign ordinance was difficult.
They do know the rules. I have had a conversation with them once in the past. So I think it's time for, we can send out a courtesy letter, something more formal.
Okay. Any other commission comments? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on. Any staff comments?
No comments this evening. I'll have a director's update at the end of the meeting.
Okay, thank you, Katie. Okay, that brings us to the approval of minutes. These are the minutes from the meeting of April first, 2021. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes? Is there a motion to approve?
I move to approve. This is Commissioner Wilk.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second approval.
Okay, Commissioner Christensen seconds. May I have the roll call, please, Edna?
Yes, Commissioner Christensen?
Aye.
Commissioner Newman?
Aye.
Commissioner Westman?
I'll abstain because I was not at the meeting.
Commissioner Wilk?
Aye.
And Chair Ruth?
Aye. So the minutes are approved, as submitted. That brings us to item four on the agenda tonight, which are public hearings. Our first public hearing is 211041st Avenue. This is for a monument sign, design permit, and a conditional use permit for the master car wash, which hopefully will soon be in operation again. So, may I have the staff report, please?
Thank you, Chair Ruth. As you mentioned, the applicant tonight is requesting a design permit, conditional use permit amendments for master car wash. For most of you, this is going to sound very familiar because it was here back in December and was approved. But for the benefit of the public and our new Planning Commission member, I'm going to go through the presentation again related to what's there now. Oh, it was approved in December, and the changes that they're requesting now. I did want to add that building official Robin Woodman is going to be joining us, but she's teaching a class tonight, so she will be on around 7:20. So when she joins, we'll go ahead and get her in as a participant, and she'll be able to answer questions. And then the applicant and owner are both going to be on the call, and they have brought their civil engineer Todd Kramer and their landscape architect Megan Bishop as well. So we have a plethora of people who can answer questions tonight at the end if you have questions about this project.
Hey, thank you, Matt.
You're welcome. Next slide, please. The 211041st Avenue is located on the east side of 41st Avenue, between Mattress Firm and Kentucky Fried Chicken. The 25,000 square foot lot is in Capitol's main commercial corridor along 41st Avenue. The current site design approved under 2006-050 includes a one-story main building attached to a car wash tunnel and a large trellis with vacuum drops, as shown here. It was badly damaged in a fire last year, which is the reason why it hasn't been closed for most of the pandemic. Next slide, please. This is the existing site plan. So under the current business model, the business offers both exterior-only and full-service vehicle cleaning services. The trellis with vacuum drops is shown here in red. The vacuum equipment shed is in green. The detail rooms in yellow, and the car wash tunnels in blue, and the recycling tanks are in orange at the top of the screen. Next slide, please. As I mentioned before, this came previously to the Planning Commission in December. The site plan approved under permit 200460 included a reduction in the size of the main building, the addition of two new freestanding canopies with solar panels and 12 vacuum drops, two new self-service kiosks, as shown here in yellow, and a new drive-through lane that circled the southeast and north perimeter of the lot and led to the car wash tunnel. I have also added the 10-foot rear landscape buffer line in red here so that you can see, this is going to come into play on the next slide, but so you can see where the original drive lane located and how it got, it went within that 10-foot landscape area. Next slide, please. So this is the proposed site plan tonight. The changes to the site plan are shown here in red, and those include the removal of five feet, four inches from the rear of the car wash tunnel, the relocation of one employee parking space from the parking area on the south side of the building to the area adjacent to the self-service kiosk, that's the little red star, the removal of the freestanding canopies with solar panels. Followed up with them, some of you may remember, in the last approval, they were given the option to either do the freestanding canopies with solar panels or just freestanding vacuum stations with no canopies. And just due to the delays in the project, they're opting to just drop the canopies from this application. So that's why you're not seeing those on the plans tonight. And then the major thing here was the relocation of the drive lane 10 feet from the rear property line. So that's the five red arrows that show how it was moved from within the 10-foot landscape strip to the 10-foot mark. And I'll go into later why that was done. Next slide, please. The zoning code does not have a specific parking requirement for car wash use, but the original conditional use permit required eight onsite parking spaces for employees. Currently, the parking is out of compliance with only three onsite parking spaces. However, the current proposal includes the eight onsite employee parking spaces that were required under the last conditional use permit and under conditional use permit 200460, shown here in blue. Since the new management plan requires less employees, additional parking is not required as far as the last permit or this permit. Next slide, please. The new zoning code contains residential transition standards to protect residential parcels that are adjacent to commercial parcels from potential negative impacts of the commercial land uses. In the previous approval, the applicant provided a 10-foot strip of landscape planting area with a tree screen along the rear lot line that is adjacent to the residential properties, except in the area where the existing car wash line is located. Now that the drive lane is being relocated, the entire 10-foot strip along the rear property line will be landscaped and include a tree screen. The design for you tonight complies with the residential transition standards. Next slide, please. A conditional use permit is required for land uses that are generally appropriate within a zoning district but potentially undesirable on a particular parcel. A conditional use permit is a discretionary action that enables the city to ensure that a proposed use is consistent with the general plan and will not create negative impacts to adjacent properties or the general public. The Planning Commission may attach conditions of approval to a conditional use permit to achieve consistency with the general plan, local coastal program, and our zoning code. In addition, when evaluating conditional use permit, the Planning Commission must consider several characteristics of proposed use, including those listed here. Those considerations are all analyzed in the staff report, but tonight I'm going to focus on D, which involves the physical suitability of this subject site for the proposed use. Next slide, please. So currently, there's an 11-foot, four-inch-high retaining wall that runs along the rear property line because the adjacent residential properties on Derby Avenue are in much lower grades than the subject parcel. The last conditional use permit included the condition of approval number 21, which required the owner to provide an engineering analysis for the retaining wall along the rear property line to ensure that the wall can continue to support the surcharge of vehicles adjacent to the rear lot line. In response to this condition, the applicant submitted a letter explaining their efforts to satisfy this condition of approval, including engineering analysis and modifications to the previously approved project. Firstly, to reduce the live load and ensure that the existing retaining wall can continue to support the surcharge of vehicles in the car wash lane, the amendment includes the relocation of the car wash drive lane 10 feet away from the rear property line. To reduce the hydrostatic load on the existing retaining wall, the proposed project includes the removal of the existing sump pump for stormwater and installation of a new inlet that drains directly to an existing 54-inch stormwater culvert. Also, the existing shed at the rear of the property was removed under the previous permit, and that is still removed in this permit, which will reduce the dead load on the existing retaining wall as well. Todd Kramer, the principal engineer for C2G Civil Consultants Group, who's on the call tonight, provided a retaining wall analysis stating that these improvements will improve the lifespan of the existing wall, and no additional analysis is needed since the project is improving the conditions through project design. Building official Robin Woodman reviewed the modifications to the site plan and analysis provided by C2G Engineering. Miss Woodman accepted the report and opposed modifications. However, the modifications to the previously approved project also required Planning Commission approval, which is why we're here tonight. Next slide, please. The applicant is also proposing a new monument sign along 41st Avenue. The proposed monument sign is seven feet, six inches tall with a sign area of 33 square feet and a two-foot-tall ledge stone veneer base. The proposed sign complies with all design standards. Next slide, please. So that staff recommends the Planning Commission review and approve project application 210149 based on the conditions and findings for approval.
Thank you, Matt. Are there any questions for staff?
Not at this time.
Okay, hearing none, then we'll open it up to the public. I'm not sure if the applicant's present or if there's anyone wishing to speak, but now is the time if you have any questions, concerns, comments regarding the car wash on 41st Avenue.
We have-
The applicant tonight is Bill Kemp, and the owner is David Carson. So I believe Bill is going to be the main point of contact here. So if you'd like to ask the applicant questions, that's who should be unmuted at this point.
I've just let Bill Kemp into the meeting, and he can speak now.
Okay. Are there any questions for Mr. Kathleen?
Hi, guys. This is Bill Kemp. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So I'm the architect for the project, and deja vu, we're back here again. So thanks for getting us in here quickly. Matt, you were really helpful in making this happen quickly. As you know, David is very interested in getting his business back up and running again. The project is going forward basically as originally approved, with the exception of making adjustments to the back of the project, as just explained. This was in response to that one- This was in response to that one comment regarding the retaining wall. And we spent a lot of time trying to track down the original designers. We were unsuccessful in that. We talked to a lot of engineers, and in the end, we came up with this approach of moving the drive aisle away from the wall to... It's generally understood in structural engineering that a one-to-one slope is an area of influence for forces. And so that's with roughly a 10-foot tall retaining wall, we moved the drive aisle 10 feet away from the retaining wall. And we also discovered through some videos of the property that we found that the existing drainage did not... It seemed like it wasn't originally constructed as it was designed. And so very early on, when this wall was built, there was some hydrostatic pressure on it that caused some issues, and there was some analysis done within a year or two of its construction. It's been in place for almost 30 years now, and we're going by the approach that by moving the loading away from it, that it will be a much better condition than what was there previously. If you have any questions, we have plenty of people here to answer them. Get technical if you want. That's all I've got.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Kemp. Are there any questions from the commission?
I have a question. This is Commissioner Wilk. I was having trouble understanding that the drainage issue, as I reviewed this package. You removed a sump pump and diverted drainage away from the wall. Is that correct? That's part of the plan?
I think it would be helpful if we could let Todd Kramer, the engineer on the project, into the discussion.
Okay. Todd, if you unmute yourself. There you go.
So a small correction. So it's not a sump pump. What really, the inlet was considered what we call a sump, but it has an open bottom. So when water goes into it and the stormwater is collected into the inlet, its first intention is to infiltrate the water into the ground. And if the storm event's so large that the ground cannot keep up with the water entering by infiltrating, it builds up within the sump and it overtops into a pipe that then connects to the 54-inch culvert at the rear of the property. We're going to eliminate the infiltration aspect of this inlet. So it will have a concrete bottom that does not allow water to infiltrate into the ground, which happened to happen within 4 feet of the retaining wall.
Okay. So the seepage at the retaining wall that... Which I believe the neighbors complained about, that there would be seepage through the retaining. So this would tend to alleviate that because now you wouldn't have a lot of hydrostatic pressure and a lot of water settling in that area, but it would be quickly drained away. Is that the idea?
Correct, yeah. There's a direct connection to the 54-inch culvert from the car wash property. It's now that when it rains, that stormwater goes through that pipe to the culvert and doesn't infiltrate anymore behind the wall.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
So, at the time that catch basin was constructed, was that designed to capture all the runoff or just a portion of it?
Looking at the grading plan, I would say 2/3 of the property was to be directed to that inlet, and the other 3 was to be directed towards 41st Avenue.
Okay. All right. So that's sufficient for the site? This is runoff of the lot, then?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Any other questions for the applicants?
Just a quick comment, and I think...
Is there nobody?
Mike Westman did also. This hand system isn't working so well. But not to give away my leanings on this, but I'd just like to say that I think that the applicant and his team took a good project and made it even better. That's it.
I also want to announce that we do have Robin Woodman on the line if the planning commission has any questions for Rob and the building official.
Okay. Thank you, Katie. Any other comments?
I had one comment. I was not here in December, but looking at the design now, I really appreciate the fact that they've added that 10-foot landscape buffer at the rear because this project does back up to those single-family residential homes. The one concern I have is that in their landscaping plan, the trees that they're proposing to use to provide a screen are palm trees. And we all know if palm trees grow up, you sort of end up with a, you know, 12- to 18-inch stick going up in the ground. So I wanted to ask the applicant if it would be possible to replace perhaps four of the trees that are in the back landscaping with some other tree. Doesn't have to be a huge tree, but something that would have a canopy to it. So we actually would be providing a screen to the residential neighborhood that's behind.
So the owner of the property, he is changing it from master car wash to splash car wash, as maybe you saw on the sign. And he's going with more of a tropical feel, so that's why the palm trees were proposed. I do have the landscape architect here, and she has said that these aren't your standard palm trees. These are more of a shorter palm tree that fans out. I'd prefer to have her answer those questions. I know nothing about trees.
Okay. Well, I will tell you, I did look up the palm trees because we have the landscape plan with the scientific names of the trees. And there are still palm trees. And over the years, they are going to grow, and it would seem to me that there are a number of other kinds of trees that have some sort of canopy that, over the years, will provide a visual screen. I mean, the whole reason for having this 10-foot strip is to provide that screen for the residential neighborhood.
Okay. Well, one thing we are concerned about is putting a lot of landscaping back there that's going to create more of a live load.
I'm not asking for any more landscaping. I'm just asking that, you know, the four palm trees be replaced with some other... And I think there are a lot of other tropical trees besides palm trees be replaced with a different kind of tree.
We're happy to make changes.
Susan, I have two dwarfed queen palms in my front yard, and they max out at about 12 feet.
Right. They have some of those in the plan, but they also have a palm tree that does get taller, four of them, which is what are the trees that they're referring to. And I actually have to get a magnifying glass to read it off the sheet about what that tree is called. But I did look them up, and they do grow to be a taller palm tree. So it's those four trees I'm interested in. The other small palms can absolutely stay.
Okay. We'll bring that up under the planning commission discussion portion. Let me get to that. I'd just like to add that I probably had more interest in the opening of this car wash and when it's going to happen than I've heard recently about the mall expansion. I can tell you this, there's a lot of community interest about getting this car wash open again. So any other comments, questions for staff or the applicant?
Is someone clicking a pen?
We do have another, we've got public comment waiting as well.
Okay.
So any other questions? We have Robin Woodman on the line, who's going to have to go back to teaching the class. Any questions for our building official?
No.
Okay. Would you like me to open the public comment?
Yeah, let's hear it from the public at this time.
Okay. So we have Susan on the line, and I have... Susan, once you unmute yourself, you can talk.
Hello? Hello?
Yes, Susan, we can hear you. There's a big echo.
Okay. My name is Susan Walton. Sorry, it's echoing in the phone. And we live directly behind the car wash. We are also very interested when it will open, but mostly because we want it to be done right and not fast. We have a number of questions. Number one, the fence is being put up. We just wanted some more specific specifications, how thick it's going to be. Right now, the fence is there. We can see lots of people through it, and they're looking right back at us, which is really unpleasant. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello?
We can hear you, Susan.
We're waiting for the rest of your questions.
Okay. The next thing, on page 66 of the report, it said there was a soils report required, and I wanted to know if that was done. I also wanted to know the height of the trees, which I didn't find in the report because that blocks our sunlight. I wanted to know lights at night during the winter, what time the lights can be on till because security lights have also been an issue at the car wash in the past. Not necessarily since the new owners, but it has been an issue. We also wanted to know about the trash load.
Sorry, you broke up. Are you still there? Susan, are you still there? It appears we've lost her on the public comment.
There are 10 cars waiting back there. And when we counted today, you could have up to 10 cars waiting.
Susan, if you could stop for one second. We lost about a minute and a half of your last comment. The last part we heard was your question about the trash, and then you broke up and disappeared.
Okay. So can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. So my question was, I think the trash was the last one before I mentioned the amount of cars that will be waiting to go through the tunnel, which in the previous design, before the fire, there were not many cars that just sat at the back waiting to go into the tunnel. I think there were about three. And then the new design, it looks like there could be up to about 10 cars just sitting there waiting at any one time, which is obviously a ton of weight. And I'm wondering if that number of cars in that space, and I know it's 10 feet away from the wall, has been accounted for in the engineer's assessment. Oh, and then the final thing is that what do we do if this is all approved and then they're out of compliance? Because there shouldn't have been the shed built at the back. That was out of compliance. But the previous owner, not the current owner, the previous owner was incredibly volatile when we would talk to him about anything. But that was out of compliance and a number of other issues. They would run it later at night when they weren't supposed to and so on. So our concerns are our quality of life, once it's up and running, and what do we do if it's not, if they're out of compliance?
Okay. Let's see if we can get those answered for you, Susan.
Thank you.
Whoever would like to take the first one? Wall configuration and dimension?
So the previous conditional use permit and this conditional use permit, both have just a condition that a 6-foot wood fence is built, without details on that fence. So I think the applicant would probably be the best person suited to answer what they're thinking in terms of the design of that wood fence.
Okay. Is the applicant still present?
I am. So this is Bill Kemp, the architect. We would be happy to build a solid wood fence with no gaps in it of 6 feet. There had been a discussion before of a concrete, a further concrete wall up there, but we prefer not to do that because of the weight on the existing retaining wall. So we can definitely have a provision in there, even a condition that said that the wall would be a 6-foot wood fence that is solid in nature.
Okay. Next question was the soils report.
So the soils report wasn't required. The soils report was a condition of the engineer's report, and we felt it wasn't necessary after doing our analysis.
Okay. So there hasn't been a soils report done. Okay. The third question she had was about the tree height and probably similar to the issue Susan has raised.
We're happy to make any changes that people see said.
Okay. Okay, we can discuss that when it comes time.
I believe that was actually the inverse. I think the tree thing is actually the inverse of Susan's because they are concerned about the loss of sunlight. Susan was actually asking for more canopy to do more... So that's kind of at odds there, so.
Yeah, okay. The lights at night?
I'm not sure if there's been a operating time proposed. But I know that David originally had prepared a business plan. I don't know if you have any... I don't want to speak for him as far as setting a time for when they would close. But I would assume that that would be something that could be conditioned.
Okay. There was a question about trash pickup?
So the trash enclosure is at the rear of the property. It will have rolling dumpsters, which I doubt the trash would actually be able to get a trash... A garbage truck would be able to get back there to pick them up. So they would probably have to be wheeled to kind of the center of the property. So that'll be something that will be done by the employees.
Okay. And that time would be similar to what it has been in the past, I presume. Okay, number of cars waiting and what that effect might have on the wall?
Again, the idea is to be 10 feet away from the wall so the zone of influence of the cars is at a one-to-one slope and going to the bottom of the wall and not pressing on the top.
And how many cars will be waiting maximum?
Right against the wall, hard to say. But they, once they come through the pay machines, they will be probably in a singular file line, so across...
Yeah, the capacity looks like it might be, what, six or seven cars from that pay station?
Yeah, I would assume that.
Okay. All right. And then her last question was compliance issues. And if they are out of compliance, Susan, that would certainly be an issue the city would look at, and we can look at their conditional use permit and lean on them. You know, worse comes to worse, the use permit could be revoked. So there's lots of avenues that the city can use to make sure they are in compliance. Okay. Do we have another public comment?
Can I just add something, Commissioner Ruth? I just want to point out that condition 18 in the proposed conditions requires a 6-foot-tall solid wood fence.
Okay.
And I'm seeing no more participants with their hand up and no public comment in our email.
Okay. With that, then we'll...
I did just see an email come in for the project. I can go ahead and read it if you'd like.
Yeah, would you, Sean, please?
Yeah, it's from E. Walton, and they stated that my concern of tree height is to maintain a screen and not get too high as to block sunlight. And on the landscape plan, those are shown as 10 feet for the pygmy date palm and 12 feet for the jelly palm. So we're talking 10 to 12 foot height because that's at maturity, so.
Okay, with that...
Thank you, Matt. Okay, with that, then we will... Yes?
Correct. No more, there's no hands up and no more emails.
Okay, then we'll close the public portion of this item and bring it back to the commission for discussion. Who would like to lead off here?
Well, I think I could lead off, and I could sort of...
Well, I think I could lead off and I could sort of clear up the tree issue. Um, as far as I'm concerned, if the applicant meets with the neighbors behind them and, you know, they agree on the trees, um, uh, that will work for me, because they're the ones who are really going to be impacted by what's going to be planted there. So, um, perhaps if they could just check in and work with the neighbors and come up with a solution, that, that would be fine. And as far as the object concerned, I agree with Chairman Ruth. I think people in town really want the car wash to be open, and I think they've done a nice job on their design, and I look forward to seeing it operating.
Hopefully soon. Any other comments, questions from the commission?
I have a comment.
Christensen?
Yep, this is Commissioner Christensen. Um, I, I just remember when we approved this and we were making comments about the landscape, that the rear ten-foot, um, landscape barrier was to shelter the neighbors from sound, visibility, all that. You know, that's, that was their safe, you know, kind of their privacy buffer. And, um, I, 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 to kind of spin off of Susan's, um, Commissioner Westman's comments, I don't have a problem with the palms necessarily. I just think that the intention of having that ten-foot buffer was to provide sound barrier, and palms don't provide sound barrier. Like, they don't provide sound delineation, so, I mean, like a spruce or some type of cypress would be appropriate there. They, they have flowering, um, I think it's a maple, um, a flowering bush. And I just, I feel like I, I do appreciate the ten-foot buffer, and it's a very nicely done landscape plan. I just would really love to see if they could really, you know, put some intention in those plants. So that's all, that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you, Courtney. Uh, any other comments?
Yes, this is Commissioner Will. I'm, I'm trying to use the hand, uh, thing, um, but I, but I-
That's not, that's not-
Doesn't always work. So, anyway, I just really had a question of, the, the, the neighbor had a concern about the hours of operation, and, and we must have something in the code already that limits the hours of, of operation. I guess that's a question of staff. They're not allowed to operate this twenty-four hours a day, or are they?
No.
I don't believe the code has any hours restrictions. I know with, with certain other conditional use permits, the planning commission has shied away from getting into dictating hours, so, um, I believe the commission could add a condition if they would like, but...
So you're, you're saying that they could be open twenty-four hours if, uh, and, and that we have no restriction on that currently?
I believe the only noise restrictions have to do with things like leaf blowers. I don't recall seeing anything specific to a car wash use and sound.
Yeah, construction hours and leaf blower ordinance, but, um, the, the planning commission could add a, an amount of time after closing for the lights to be turned off. You know, you'll want them on for a certain amount of time for cleanup.
Did I ask the applicant what their planned hours of operation are?
Yes, um-
I believe they had that in their previous one in December, but this, they did not submit a, resubmit a business plan with this, because, uh, it was not changing, so I, I could get that for you, but I do not have it right this second. Give me a minute, I'll, I'll look it up.
Okay. Well, he's looking it up. Any other questions or comments? I think past practice there, I think it used to be closing at six o'clock. If I'm, memory serves me correct, but I'm not a hundred percent certain.
I wouldn't support that kind of a condition. That seems too restrictive to me.
I, I'm not proposing that, that restriction either at this point, but perhaps a two A.M. closure might be a little bit too late?
Well, there is a general, um, provision in our ordinance. There's some, uh, noise, uh, a noise, um, provision that could be, uh, implemented if they were open at two A.M. and causing, uh, disturbance.
Yeah, but that, that, that's kind of was my, my concern. Did we have an avenue if, if neighbors complained and they were open all night, do we have a, an avenue to, um, to, to pursue the complaints?
Same provision as, uh, for barking dogs.
I believe it's a nuisance provision. Uh, and I did look back, by the way, there were not any hours proposed in the previous management plans, so, um, so we're not sure on the hours. I believe the applicant may be able to answer what they were prior to, prior to the fire.
Is the applicant still present?
Uh, the architect is, um, David, I'm, I'm, I believe is, is on the road and, and listening in. I don't know that he has the capability of, of speaking. But it, it is, it is gonna require a couple people to be on site to, to run the operation, and, uh, I, I would be surprised if it, if it ran past eight o'clock at night. But I, that's just me. I, I hesitate to say anything.
Well, I, I would be in favor of having some hours in there that they couldn't operate beyond. You know, perhaps maybe nine o'clock at night and the lights go out at ten. You know, something that I would feel would be reasonable for a car wash operation. And then it would be up to them to, you know, operate within those hours and perhaps have something saying that, you know, they can't start operating till like eight o'clock in the morning. So then you're including what are considered sort of normal business hours.
Uh, Commissioners, this is Planner Susanto. I do have an email from the business owner stating that the hours of operation will be eight A.M. to six P.M.
That were, and we-
That's what it's been in the past. Okay, any other questions or comments? Someone like to attempt a motion?
I will, uh, attempt a motion. I will move approval, uh, with the conditions imposed, uh, in the staff report with the addition that the applicant is, uh, directed to work with the neighbors in selection of trees in the rear so that it can satisfy their various concerns of protecting sunlight and also protecting, uh, their privacy. And my motion does not include any, uh, limitation on hours of operation, because I don't think it's a problem, and I don't think we should, uh, impose a condition where it's not broken.
Question?
Will?
Y- yes, the, the, uh, the, the notion of adding the condition of working with the neighbors is, did we do that before? Because it seems so vague. I can't imagine how you'd enforce that.
We, we have done this before. Uh, there was a mixed-use building recently built on Broomer by the, close to the corner of Forty-first. And, um, we worked with the neighbor and the property owner to identify a tree. You might, you may want to, in your condition to say, ha- have staff working with the property owner and the neighbor to find a mutual resolution. Um, so therefore, staff could make the ultimate decision if, if they came to an impasse.
Uh-huh, I'll accept that amendment to my motion.
Okay, is there a second to the motion?
I'll second it.
Okay. Any discussion else?
Y- yes, I'd like to discuss it further. Um, so my, my concern, I guess, would be, would be staff judgment in this, being the arbiter of, of the discussion. I was, uh, I noticed the applicant was very interested in having palm trees back there, because that was part of their design, and they wanted tropical feel. And I, and I think they, that desire should be, um, catered to. Um, so I would hate to have a, um, a discussion going where that, where they have to compromise the design and feel of their business, um, in, in that particular regard.
I'd, I'd like to respond to, um, to Mr. Will. I, I don't feel that they should have to, to replace the palm trees. I feel that they should accentuate that planting plan with a substrate against the fence of some type of cypress or something specifically designed for sound barrier. It's just they could accentuate their existing planting plan, which is very nice, with, with, you know, the date palm and the jelly palm, along with, you know, a holly or something more substantial than the flowering maple bush. Because those things don't, I mean, they just, they're not, they're just not curated usually for sound buffer.
Okay, thank you, Courtney. Okay, I think we have a direction for staff on this. Is there a second? Oh, we've had a second to the motion. We have the roll call, please, Edna?
Sure. Commissioner Christensen?
I support the motion. Aye.
Commissioner Newman?
Aye.
Commissioner Westman?
Aye.
Commissioner Will?
Aye.
Chair Ruth?
Aye. The motion carries unanimously, and, uh, hopefully the car wash will be cleaning cars soon. Okay, that brings us to the second public hearing tonight. This is, uh, a public hearing regarding a tree removal at five twenty-seven Capitola Avenue. Uh, we have a staff report, please.
Thank you, Chair Ruth, and good evening. The item before you is an appeal of an administrative approval of a tree removal permit to remove one pine tree on a residential property located at five hundred twenty-seven Capitola Avenue. Uh, there have been a number of, of, uh, tree removal applications and appeals in the recent past, but I'm still gonna go ahead and walk through the process here. Um, I'll, I'll start with what general findings need to be made by staff, followed by, um, the, the general process and as, as well as the basis of the appeal itself. Next, the appellant will be given the opportunity to, to speak and answer any planning commission questions. And after that, the chair will open up the public portion of the hearing, and that will be followed by the planning commission discussion and decision. So most tree removal permits are reviewed and approved at the staff level, as indicated on this, uh, flow chart on the left-hand side. They begin with a preliminary review by public works staff, who can, uh, tentatively approve that, that application, um, of a non-heritage tree, only if those findings for removal are contained within, uh, the code section twelve twelve one eighty for non-heritage trees, and if those findings can be made. If the findings cannot be made, the application is transferred to planning staff for further review. The city may, in that process, require the applicant to pay for an arborist under the contract of the city to provide an arborist report for the tree. The community development director will then make a determination based on the findings. Following, in, in this situation, following the site inspection, public works staff was able to make the required findings for removal, and therefore, an arborist report was not required. Following a posting and notice to the public that there was a pending tree removal application on the site, uh, the city received an appeal on March twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-one. The tree proposed for removal, as, as did before, is a pine tree located in the front yard of five hundred twenty-seven Capitola Avenue, approximately five feet from the public right-of-way. The tree is two and a half feet in diameter and estimated to be over sixty feet tall, with a significant canopy spread over the subject property, as well as the adjacent property of five twenty-five Capitola Avenue. The tree is not a heritage tree and is not located in an environmentally sensitive habitat area. For either the community development director or planning commission to approve the removal of a non-heritage tree, the removal must comply with findings within the aforementioned code section. And, uh, the subsections C one through four. Within C one, as shown on this slide, at least one criteria for removal must be made, which include the health or condition of the tree, safety considerations, and property damage. When public works performed the site visit, they found evidence supporting all three criteria for the removal. Because the health, condition, safety, and property damage, uh, were visible, staff did not require an arborist report in this case. Each of the criteria for removal will be addressed, uh, individually in the, these following slides. First, uh, the first criterion considers the health or condition of the tree with respect to disease, infestation, or danger of falling. Seen in these images, there's evidence of, that the tree is in poor health, where sap is visible on the bark. This is typical of insect infest- state, infestation or fungal disease. Next slide, the, the tree also has a co-dominant, has co-dominant leaders, three of them, where the main trunk splits into these co-dominant leads. The, this results in competing limbs and often weakens the overall structure of the tree. As co-dominant stems grow, they continue to grow against themselves and grow weaker over time, increasing the risk of branch failure or leader failure. The next consideration is safety. As I explained, there are, uh, safety concerns with respect to the failure of one or more co-dominant leaders. Uh, there's a risk that the tree will fail due to poor structure, which could result in injury to those in the vicinity or those within the structures themselves. The third consideration is for move, uh, for removal is for situations where a tree has caused or has the potential to cause unreasonable property damage and/or interference with existing utility services. In this slide, it looks at five twenty-seven Capitola Avenue. The roots are causing damage to the existing driveway as evidenced with, or by uplift and the cracking in the middle of the driveway. In this slide, uh, we're looking, uh, from five twenty-five Capitola Avenue. As you can see, the roots are causing damage to the walkway on the neighboring property. On this slide, that damage extends through the staircase, walkway, and into the structure as the stucco in the wall has begun to crack. With respect to interference with existing utility services, there is potential for issues should more, one or more co-dominant leader fail. The, some of the lines, uh, though we did not identify if they were the power lines themselves, go through the tree, uh, in between the leaders. Finding number two is that all possible and feasible alternatives to tree removal have been evaluated, including, but not limited to, undergrounding of utilities, selective root cutting, trimming, and relocation. Due to the extensive ongoing damage caused by the roots, there are no feasible mitigation measures that can be implemented to address all considerations here. Staff does not believe that root cutting could be implemented to the extensive root surface growth, growth pattern without causing serious harm or death to the tree. And without any kind of root mitigation, the, uh, the damage that has been occurring to the adjacent structures and, and flatwork would, uh, continue. So those are the, the basic findings for, uh, removal that staff would have to make or the planning commission would have to make. In the following slides, uh, we'll summarize the submitted basis of the appeal. Appellant states that the tree is in good health and does not have a history of causing safety issues. These are some of the, an excerpt from the, uh, submitted appeal letter. The appellant, uh, appellant suggests that risks posed by the co-dominant leaders could be further mitigated. Give the example of strapping. The appellant, uh, further states that there are several benefits to the subject tree and trees in general, uh, and what they provide to the community, as summarized above. Finally, they, uh, we've summarized a list of recommendations made in regards to the municipal code and city policies regarding the processing of tree applications. With that, staff recommends that the planning commission review and uphold, uh, the original administrative approval- administrative approval of the application based on the conditions and, and findings for approval.
Okay. Thank you, Sean. Are there any questions for Sean before we open the public hearing and hear from the appellant?
A quick, two quick questions.
Commissioner Newman?
One, um, I think on page one, it says, uh, applicant, but it should say appellant at the top or?
Are, are you referring to the staff report or?
Yeah, the staff report, page one of the staff report, where it says applicant, shouldn't it say appellant?
Uh, do you think you could go ahead and read me that line? I, I don't actually.
Yeah, I want to make. Okay. Well, we can take a look at that later. My other question is, do we know what kind of tree this is?
It, it's, it's clearly a variety of pine. Our, the staff, uh, estimation is that it's a Monterey pine.
That's what I was thinking, it's the Monterey pine. Okay. That's all.
Okay. Any other?
I had a question. Miami.
No, we're here, you go ahead.
Okay. Uh, this is Commissioner Christiansen. I'm, so the appellant is Robert Edgren and the applicant to have it removed, just to clarify, is the property owner. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Um, is there, as far as safety, I, I, in your presentation, has there been, I mean, safety is, is, you're saying that the, the three leads that are coming off, they're potential for breakage? Is that the safety concern?
That's the primary safety consideration in this case is their attachment to the, to the base where they begin to split.
Has there been any, and what, what is the property owner's primary complaint? Is it his, the breakage of his, you know, his personal property of like the sidewalk? Or is it falling leaves or falling branches? Or is there, is the, has he identified a primary complaint about the tree?
I, I think I would rather let the, the owner and, uh, their neighbor go into depth about their, their concerns, but I would say generally it is in regards to the potential for leader failure.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Okay. Any other questions for staff before we, uh, hear from the appellant? See, and then we will open the public portion and we'll hear from Mr. Edgren first. Mr. Edgren, are you present?
Mr. Edgren, it, once you turn off your mute, you are allowed to talk.
I believe the, the phone caller is also Mr. Edgren. We may want to unmute him as well.
Okay.
Hey, Mr. Edgren, are you there?
You may have to press star nine on your phone to talk.
Katie, is he attempting to get through?
I, you know, I, I can see that he's there and his hand is up. He's muted, so he needs to, um, if he's dialed in, he needs to press star nine on his phone to unmute.
Do you hear that, Mr. Edgren? You need to press star nine on your phone?
Or if he's participating via the live Zoom, he needs to press unmute on his screen. Oh, here we go.
Looks like he unmuted.
Looks like you're unmuted.
Mr. Edgren?
Looks like his computer is unmuted, but his phone is still muted. So if you can press star nine on your phone. Oh, there we go. Mr. Edgren?
Oh.
Now he's disappeared. He's, the video is still working, but.
That's why we need to start meeting in present.
You're right.
I agree.
In person, I mean.
Maybe we can start with the owner, uh, of the property, cause they're also an owner. We do have the owner and their, the neighbor present.
Okay.
Okay, we have.
Ms. Lowry, are you there?
Okay. I'm allowing Ms. Lowry to speak. She's muted and needs to unmute herself. Ms. Lowry, you're muted and you need to unmute yourself. Ms., uh, Bushbinder is available if you'd like to take her comment first.
Who's that? Katie?
Emily Bushbinder is available.
Okay. Okay. Emily, are you there?
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. Great. Um, so I'm the property owner next door and, um, this tree is causing damage to the property. So first of all, the parking for my business is in the back of my building and there's the walkway that where clients come from, the parking lot to the front of my building, and it's between 525 and 527. So the, um, the pine tree has basically buckled the, um, uh, the walkway and so not only does water cool there in a rainy season, which I wish we had had this year, but we did not, but it also creates a fall risk for my clients. I'm an estate planning attorney. Most of my clients are elderly and that creates a real risk even in good weather. In bad weather, the pine cones are falling, the, the needles are falling, the branches threaten to fall. The tree branches ran, reach out over my building and they have actually prevented my placing anybody in one of my offices. So that front office I can no longer use. I've actually moved myself into that office because I need all of the offices in my building right now and I can't put an employee in that office. So it's creating substantial danger to me, my clients, my staff, and my property. We had an arborist come out to evaluate the tree. You know, I'm, I'm a very proud tree hugger. I love trees. I don't want to cut them down. And the opinion of the arborist that we brought out said, there's no way to do anything but take this tree down.
And why is it you can't fill the front office?
Because the branches and the debris coming down make me concerned that a branch is gonna come down, break through the roof and, and injure an employee or myself, cause now I'm sitting in that front office. And, you know, it's obviously on a good weather day, it doesn't seem like such a danger, but this, this winter, we've had tremendous wind and, um, I had to take the employee that was in that office and say, you need to come out of that office. You can't occupy that office anymore. So I can't use part of my.
Okay. Any, anything else you'd like to add?
Uh, no, just that, uh, I, I really appreciate your, your work and, and your time.
Okay. Thank you for your input.
And by the way, if you'd like me to transplant that tree to splash car wash, I'm sure the owner would be happy to do that, but I don't.
So that'll, that brings us back. Is Mr. Edgren available yet?
So his hand is up, um, and it looks like he's unmuted. Uh, Mr. Edgren, can you, oops, let me see. Let me see. Uh, Mr.
It looks like he.
There we go. Mr. Edgren, can you speak?
Oh, my gosh. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, great, great. Boy, this is, this is one of, one of the most confusing things I've ever walked through. Things don't work, there are, you know, the, uh, descriptions of how to access it, they're, they're either not functioning or something's going on, but anyway, okay, back to the tree. Uh, yeah.
Excuse me?
Go ahead.
Yes, Mr. Edgren, turn up his volume.
Turn off? Turn up.
Turn up your volume a bit so we can all hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. Um, yeah, I'm talking through my phone. So anyway, in regards to the tree, um, I've been here since, what's, 1975, okay? I always walked by that tree, I always kind of noticed it because I thought the little, little, the little, um, uh, bungalow there was kind of cute and it had all these like kind of river rocks around it and kind of funky little place, but the tree's been there a long, long time. It's been there longer than any of us. Uh, my assessment, and I had a tree, uh, tree service look at it, uh, they said it's a healthy tree. There's nothing wrong with it. You look up at the top of it, there's no rusty, uh, pine needles. That's the first, uh, sign of a bad, of a sick tree. Um, you know, the neighbor next door moved it, purchased that little building next door and she made a fuss about, I guess we had a big wind, I kind of remember that, I think it nearly blew off my roof. Um, probably happens every 50 years, but, uh, I guess some acorns hit her, uh, top and everything. Anyway, to make a long story short, you know, that was, the tree has been there a long time. The thing with the three branches that shoot up there, I talked to another, uh, arborist and they said, oh, you just cable those together or strap them together and it actually is stronger than a single branch going up. So, you know, I, I read over at Morrison's, I believe, uh, report and, uh, I wanted to make a bet, uh, with him saying that, you know, in 30 years, let's meet at this tree and if it's still standing, you pay me a hundred, I'll pay you a hundred, whatever. Um, bottom line is, the tree's fine. There's nothing wrong with it. It provides a tremendous amount of cooling in that area and I don't know if any, if, if you all read my reports about, I did a lot of research on the value of a tree and, um, but this is, you know, this is just not the tree itself. This also has to do with the, the three, um, professional buildings there. Uh, I don't know the exact, uh, addresses, but they're all in a row and in the back and I remember those lots, little houses over there, there was trees on them. Okay. Anyway, I think it was 1977, they built the, um, those three clinics or whatever you want to call them. Uh, but they didn't know landscaping or very little landscaping. The, you talked about the situation, the parking lot. This parking lot, which spans three lots, that's what, uh, 120 feet wide, goes all the way to the back fence, all the way to the back fence with no trees. Okay? Uh, and that area gets very hot, very hot during the summer. So hot you can't walk out with bare feet. Um, not a good idea, not a good idea. So I know, you know, that, that's not the subject of this meeting, but I think it should be. I think it should be taken into consideration that, um, whatever was approved back in 1976 or 77 shouldn't have been. And, uh, you know, you've got different owners now, or is it one?
Mr. Edgren, if we could stick to the topic, we're not, we're not discussing the clinic property right now. We're discussing the tree.
Okay. The heat that comes off the asphalt parking lot is cooled to a certain degree by this tree. You take that tree away, you're gonna have an oven right around that whole area, circumference of that whole area and you've got a little break with this tree cooling part of it. Um, and there's nothing wrong with the tree. You know, I, I would suggest tabling this. Get a, uh, arborist out there, independent arborist, because I believe they had an arborist that's connected with, uh, Lewis Tree Service. Well, you know, okay, let's go. You know, it's just kind of a conflict of interest, I think, and, uh, my guy said there's nothing wrong with it, so. And I was reading the, uh, Emily's, uh, report and she said, uh, well, we had, uh, pine cone hand grenades coming down during that big storm. You, you know, you live with nature. You know, this is not like, uh, not like, uh, living up in Boulder Creek where you're gonna have fires every, every so often. Um, what, what's a few pine cones? Is that really gonna hurt people? But I guess she's afraid that it's gonna whole collapse on her, um, her, uh, office there, which she's only owned a few months. I haven't talked to the former owner, but I would like to. Uh, the other thing is, I, I wrote in my report, I said, you know, according to Morrison's report on that tree, uh, I went driving around Depot Hill. Heck, I, I would say half the trees up on Depot Hill fall within his description of sick trees or bad trees, whatever you want to call them. And it's like, bring up Carmel, but the, uh, city even gets a whiff of you cutting down a tree, you're in big trouble. Um, no, I think this needs more study and at the end of my report, I think the city needs to look at a whole different, um, assessment of trees, treating them to something more than just trees. Um, the, these are assets to a community, to a neighborhood, to a block. You drive cap, down to Capitola Avenue now and I can't even imagine what it would be like without that tree there. We already chopped one down on Capitola Avenue. It was a beautiful tree. Even the tree cutters didn't want to cut it down.
Mr. Edgren? Mr. Edgren?
Yeah.
You're kind of rambling. I'm just wondering if we can kind of wrap this up?
Okay, sure. Well, uh, save the tree. And I think, uh, if you don't want to vote on it tonight, cable it until we get more information. Let's hire an independent arborist. Um, there are those out there that like to save trees. Um, let's, uh, get more information on it, which hopefully will lead to a whole new process for trees in Capitola. Um, that's where I'm coming from. That's it.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Edgren. Appreciate your, your concern and your appeal. Thank you.
Thank you.
Katie, do we have anyone else wishing to speak? Thank you, Mr. Edgren.
Yes, we have, uh, uh, no, there was a hand up. Yes. Liliana Mulda. And it looks like the previous speaker has their hand up again and so just a, um, a reminder that we typically don't go back and forth with after public speaking, but, uh, Liliana.
Yeah. We're not gonna, we're not going to entertain a, an online dispute between commenters here. So who's, who's the newest person that would like to speak? Can we have her on now?
Yes.
Hello, this is Shelley Laurie on, uh, Lilian Mulda's computer right now.
Hello.
Technical difficulty as well. So I'm Shelley Laurie, I'm the owner of the property and I respect what Mr. Edgren has to say. I respect what Emily Bookbinder has to say. Uh, we all appreciate the benefit of trees. However, there are times when there are trees that happen to be in the wrong location, be the wrong type of tree, and pose a problem or a hazard or a danger to the health and safety of people. This is right at the sidewalk. It is, uh, causing property damage to the adjoining neighbor. The adjoining neighbor, Miss Bookbinder, and I have discussed the removal of the tree in working together as good neighbors. I can appreciate, again, that people like trees. This is a pine tree which has three trunks coming off of it. It has had multiple people look at it. I have created, uh, I had contacted Lewis Tree Service, Ms. Bookbinder contacted another, I think it was Community Tree. Um, Community Tree is who she's referring, referring to as far as it being a diseased tree and a problem. Also, Lewis Tree said it was a problem. Also, the city of Capitola says it has problems. Uh, so it, it, it's a tree that, um, has reached its economic, I mean, reached its, uh, lifespan under the opinions of these experts. I, as a property owner, don't- I, as a property owner, don't want damaged sidewalks. I don't want people falling on pine cones. I don't want people being injured. And, and I don't want limbs falling, knocking out power lines, possibly causing personal damage to people walking down the sidewalk, or cars that may be parked on the street. And as Ms. Bookbinder mentioned, she is an attorney. She deals with senior citizens that come to her office. It's irrelevant how long she has owned the property. And we collectively have, have communicated and agree as neighbors that this is the best for each of us to do. We ha- we have as a condition a replacement tree. We've, uh, and so on the property, there will be a tree replaced. I listen to Mr. Edgren, and I appreciate that he wants to preserve the tree. However, he also, in my communication with him, is that he wants to address the City of Capitola's tree policy. And this is the tree that he wants to preserve as an example for what the city should be doing. I don't think that should be the basis for whether or not a tree is removed. So, if there are any questions you have for me, I appreciate that, and will address these questions. But this is, uh, my position.
Thank you, Ms. Mulda, for your input.
This is Shelley.
Do we have anyone else?
This is Shelley Laurie. I'm actually on Lilian Mulda's computer.
Oh, okay.
I'm owner of the property.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Thank you. Okay. Is there anyone else out there that would wish to speak to this item?
I, I just.
Katie, are we seeing anyone that hasn't spoken before?
No, I'm not seeing.
Ms. Laurie.
I, I'm not seeing anyone on Zoom at this point, and also not, no emails regarding this item.
Mr. Newman, was that you or Mr. Wilk that wants a question?
I have a quick question for the last speaker. What do you plan to replace the tree with? Do you know?
Um, I'm considering a crepe myrtle because I love the colors and the vibrancy. Uh, they have a beautiful bark, and, uh, I think that would be an enhancement to the property.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Laurie.
Can I have a question of staff? I'm sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead, Mr. Wilk.
Um, it's a question of staff, I guess. Uh, if this appeal was denied, could it be then appealed further to the City Council?
Um, if this appeal was denied, I, I believe it ends at that point. Um. No, I, actually, I'm sorry. If, if this is a, if it was appealed to the Planning Commission, I, I bel- um, I believe it can get, still be appealed to the City Council. I can look that up quickly, but I, I believe they have the, the ability to appeal it further.
That might influence my vote, so I'd appreciate that information.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Wilk. Okay, anyone else in the public wishing to comment on this item? Tree removal appeal of five twenty-seven Capitola Avenue? See, now we will close the public portion and bring it back to the commission for discussion. Who wants to lead off?
I'll start.
Um.
Let's.
Okay, Mr. Newman?
Christensen, do you want to start?
Oh, uh, I just, I just had a quick comment, honestly. Um, I just, I, I honestly feel that if the property owner and the tenants of the property feel that they're, I mean, they've brought, they've gone to the trouble to bring it to the city to find, you know, these findings that to, to remove this tree, the city has gone to the trouble of, of, you know, making these determinations. Um, it's, it's, I think, I mean, I've, I've observed this tree personally. It's a, it's very giant. And, uh, and if they're willing to replace it with something more appropriate, I, I find no valid reason. I mean, I don't want to lead into, you know, my determination. I'm just saying that, like, it's just, I, I keep hearing these tree arguments, and it's, the property owners are, anyway, I just, I feel that, I appreciate the property owners and the tenants of the property coming to plead their case.
Thank you, Commissioner Christensen. Commissioner Newman?
So, um, yeah, I was interested in the type of tree because I, I thought it was Monterey pine. And, uh, I've observed numerous Monterey pine trees reach the end of their life. And they don't, they're not like redwood, they live to be a thousand years old. They live, live to be sixty or seventy years old. And I think that's important to me because, taking the long view here, thirty years from now, if we don't allow this tree to be removed, it's probably not going to be there anyway. If they plant a new tree now, in thirty years, we'll have a great canopy. So, I don't see the long-term benefit of maintaining a tree that is pretty much at the end of its life and postponing the replacement so that there, we can all enjoy a, a tree that is more suitable right now for the spot. I, I, I found the, um, cities and the staff reports to be very compelling.
Thank you, Mr. Newman. Anyone else?
I'll, I'll, I'll go. Um, you know, I, I think an urban forest in a town is an important thing to have. But, um, people always bring up Carmel and how well they do. And the reality is in Carmel, they do remove a number of trees annually, and they have a very aggressive program of replanting trees. And as Commissioner Newman mentioned, this is a Monterey pine tree. And if you look it up, um, they say that the longest they will live is somewhere between seventy to eighty years. So, it, it is an old tree that was planted in the wrong place. And, uh, I agree that the tree should be removed and come out. Um, I do think that the city has allowed a number of trees to be removed. And when we ask for a replacement tree, we often don't get anything that is equivalent to the tree that has left. Um, you know, the owner has talked about that they would be willing to plant a crepe myrtle. And if you read the, um, list of trees that was done by John Allen, which I think was done in about two thousand and thirteen, he talks about a crepe myrtle tree as being one that gets fifteen to thirty feet tall, and is suitable for, you know, parkway or median type use. So I do think if we're going to allow someone to take out, um, what is a major tree, they should, it should be replaced, um, with a tree that's actually going to grow up to be a real tree, not a large bush. So, I, I would ask my fellow commissioners to consider, um, requiring the applicant to plant a tree that's ultimately going to get to the thirty or forty foot range. Doesn't have to be, you know, a hundred foot tall redwood tree, but, um, something that will contribute to the urban forest of this particular neighborhood because, as Mr. Edgren mentioned, there aren't too many trees in the area. I also read through, um, his comments about, uh, you know, some of the things that needed to be changed as far as the city's tree ordinance is concerned. And I agree sometime in the future, because I think the staff's pretty overwhelmed right now, that we should look at our tree ordinance and perhaps consider rewriting it. But the one thing I would like to see us do right now is change the fee that we charge for somebody to appeal, um, a tree being removed. It costs a hundred and thirty-six dollars, um, for your application fee to take out a tree. And then we say for the public to appeal that or participate in that process, they have to pay a fee of five hundred and thirty-six dollars. And that's because in the city's fee schedule, we have one fee for appealing any administrative decision. And I would like to see the Planning Commission, uh, recommend to the council that perhaps that, um, appeal of administrative decisions have more than one fee number in there because I don't think it's appropriate to have to pay, uh, the five hundred and thirty-six dollars to, to appeal a tree. Um, I also would support his request that, uh, the signs on, that go up on the trees. Right now, we do an eight and a half by eleven sign. The city easily has the capability of doing an eleven by fourteen sign. Its printers and everything easily print that, that size appeal letter. And it would be a lot easier for the public to see. So, in summary, I'm in favor of taking the tree out. I would like to see something other than a crepe myrtle tree planted. I would like to see us consider making a recommendation to the council regarding the appeal to a tree removal appeal fee. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Any other comments?
Yes, Commissioner Wilk, I'll go. So first of all, I'd like to thank Mr. Edgren for his hard work and, and appreciate, appreciation of the trees. Um, I'm, I'm sympathetic, but not, not to the extent that, uh, that, that I, I would have approved his appeal. And the reason is because, um, we really need this heritage tree list. Uh, the city isn't that big. We should be able to go around and, and be able to list which trees need saving. And we have no heritage tree list, and, and there's reasons for that. But that, that would, that would go a long way towards providing not only guidance for us in making decisions as to whether or not that tree could be saved, but it would be guidance for real estate agents and home buyers and business buyers that said, hey, you know, be careful, you know, you've got the foundation of this building close to a tree, and it's a heritage tree. And so take that into account because it might damage your foundation. And they could buy the property being aware that the tree is special and needs to have consideration. And finally, there might be an opportunity if it was a heritage tree list or a, you know, some sort of list that Mr. Edgren proposed, we could actually provide funding for the maintenance of such trees. But we have none of those things. So, it's very difficult for me to tell a property owner that this tree, that they had no idea was very special to the City Council or the city or the community at large, suddenly has to remain a safety slash property hazard. So, hence, we do have the criteria, um, the three different criteria for allowing the, the removal. Um, I'm not sure I buy the safety issue. Um, that's why I'd be curious to see this go to the City Council. Because the last two issues that we had on trees, the City Council, the first time they overturned our ruling, and then the second time, we just, we, we just allowed the tree to be removed for the same reason, because of branches were actually falling and damage was done. And there was pictured evidence of, uh, of damage being done. Here, we don't have that. Um, we have different inputs. We don't have a, a, a arborist report in the package, just conflicting statements. Some say it's, uh, it's, it's towards the end of its life and it's, it's damaged. Others say it's healthy. But ultimately, what, what I'm impressed with is the, uh, danger to the, the, the property. Um, not so much the driveways or the walkways, but the actual foundation of the building, as evidenced by the cracked stucco. So, I don't see how we can, we can burden a property owner with trying to save a tree when it's destroying his property or his or her property. Um, with regards to the crepe myrtle, I think that's covered in, uh, that issue is covered with canopy coverage, um, which is the one good thing I think we can let, hang our hat on in the, in the tree ordinances, which is, um, you know, you want the fifteen to thirty percent canopy coverage, and this property meets that. So, with the crepe myrtle, it meets the canopy coverage. I'd be, I'd be happy with the crepe myrtle, even though it, it wouldn't be, uh, necessarily a big tree. Um, beyond that, let's see. Yeah, I, uh, I guess that's it. Um, so, I, um, I'm ready to make, well, that, that, those are my comments.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Wilk. I, I just have a comment. I'm concerned how easy it is in this city now to get trees removed. It never used to be like this. It was always a lot more difficult to do. And in the past several months, and Mr. Wilk, you alluded to this, we've lost the largest tree up in the Jewel Box neighborhood on the entire hill, the cedar on Capitola Avenue, and we've lost that redwood tree on, on, uh, what is it? Lincoln Prospect?
Forty-Ninth.
Forty-Ninth. Uh, you know, the trees weren't diseased. There was nothing wrong with them. Proper maintenance could have saved those trees, but the city allows them because the property owner says it's a danger. And in this case, you know, we've got a similar thing. We do have some property damage. But I, I just think we need to look at our, what, how we're allowing trees to be removed so easily in this city. Uh, my other thing is, Mr. Edgren spent five hundred dollars to appeal this. I think we owe it to him to have an independent arborist look at this tree. That would be my, my recommendation. I, I really feel he deserves that, having gone to the trouble to appeal this. So with that, I'll end my comments, entertain any motions that anyone would care to, to make.
Do we have a, do we have an answer about the appeal to the City Council?
Yes.
Katie, were you able to look that up?
We did. And the, the applicant could appeal this to the City Council.
Okay.
Can I ask the chair, Mr. Ruth?
Yes.
Um, so what you're suggesting is that we continue this while we have an arborist look at the tree?
Correct. I think we owe that to the person who's made the appeal.
I'm prepared to try a motion. That's okay.
Go, go for it.
I, I don't think, um, when we're hearing an appeal, that we have the ability to put conditions on it. So I think it's an up or down, uh, vote. So I'm going to move that we deny the appeal. I'll second.
I would.
This is Commissioner Wilk.
Motion, motion and a second to deny the appeal and allow the tree to be removed? Any discussion on the motion? Any comments? Hearing none. Edna, can we have the roll call, please?
Sure. Commissioner Christensen?
Aye.
Commissioner Newman?
Aye.
Commissioner Westman?
No.
Commissioner Wilk?
Aye.
Chair Ruth?
The chair votes no. Okay. The motion carries. Uh, permission has been granted to remove the tree. And that completes our agenda tonight, except for a few, couple of items. Uh, do we have a director's report, Katie?
We do. Um, okay, good evening, Planning Commission. Um, I, I've got a few updates for you. So, on April twelfth, the, the California Coastal Commission reviewed our zoning code update for certification. Uh, as you know, this effort's been going forth for about two and a half years, working with Coastal Commission staff. Um, when we went to Coastal Commission, they had basically four, their staff had four items that they wanted changed within our code. Um, two of them being the Inn at Depot Hill and the Monarch Cove Inn. They wanted to, um, take away the underlying, the base zoning. We had had a base zoning of R one for both of those properties. And the Coastal Commission staff was asking that the Inn at Depot Hill be visitor-serving base zone with also visitor-serving overlay. So basically just only, only allowed to do what's in the visitor-serving zone. And for, um, the Monarch Cove Inn, similar request. And then they also were removing our, um, kind of negotiations of allowing residential at the Monarch Cove Inn in exchange for a public pathway or visitor-serving accommodation nightly use on that site. So their recommendations included both of those items. They also had a recommendation to fix the, uh, to edit the descriptions of the green. They also had a recommendation to fix the, to edit the descriptions of the green bluff above the future, uh, above the old theater site for a future hotel. And the fourth item was to take away the allowance to build residential, a mixed-use, pure residential above commercial on the old theater site. So when this went, on April twelfth, the Coastal Commission accepted all of the staff changes except for the Monarch Cove Inn site. They, uh, the owners, the Blodgets came out and spoke, as well as, uh, I think there were over a dozen public comments submitted to the Coastal Commission from the Depot Hill residents. And I think four Depot Hill residents actually spoke at the hearing as well as the Blodgets. And the Coastal Commission were great listeners, and they said this needs more time. We'd like this, uh, the Monarch Cove Inn to be submitted separately so that the Coastal Commission can work with the owners and the residents. They understand both sides of the issue of that, of the location being tucked away at the end of a residential neighborhood, and the Blodgets not being able to further invest into the property because of um issues with, you know, not wanting to disturb the neighbors. So we've taken that, their, their recommendation was to take that out in enti- in its entirety, all the changes, to revert back to how it's been, and we'll work on a modification and bring it forth to Coastal Commission. So next week at city council, they'll be asked, I've recommended that they accept the changes requested from the Coastal Commission. And I, I think it is a great outcome to the extent that we can continue to work with the Blodgets on that one, on that one property and the Depot Hill residents without it holding up the whole code. So that was the first update, so hopefully next weekend, the, next week, the, the city council is going to review that. The second update is our SB two grant. Recently, we gave you an update on um the new standards that we'll be looking at for multifamily, the objective design standards. And the second portion of the SB two grant is ADUs. Um, so we're going to be creating ADU guidance documents as well as prototype ADUs. And Matt Orbach has been working, uh, has been managing this project. Next week, the city council is going to be considering um entering into a contract with a local architect named Workbench, and so that will be considered, and then we'll be moving forward with that project. And we're, um, we're planning on utilizing the planning commission as the design review board for the prototype ADUs. So you'll be seeing that project coming to you regularly with updates and helping us with the decision-making on designs as we move forward. Um, and lastly, um, the IHO, our, our Inclusionary Housing Ordinance. You'll recall last year, we were working on our Inclusionary Housing Ordinance, trying to um update it, and then we had a lot of other things that stepped in the way, and this is city council review of the Inclusionary Housing Ordinance. Uh, at our, not next week's meeting, but the, um, the meeting at the end of May, I'll be giving an overview of the IHO, and I plan to bring that also to Planning Commission at our next meeting to give you an update on the changes to the Inclusionary Housing Ordinance. And we also do have a third party working on that uh for the Nexus Study, so reevaluating the fees that we charge for our INLUs. So I'm kind of, I'm calling 2021 our, our year of focusing on affordable housing with, between the SB two grant, um, this, we've got a LEAP grant that's active, working on this IHO update, and a couple of great projects towards affordable housing, so um, and hoping to get to the tree ordinance by 2022.
And let us know where you're gonna, where you're gonna build this affordable housing, will you, when you find that land?
We're looking, we're looking. So, um, so, you know, exciting projects that I think will have a great, great outcome. I'm really excited about the ADU prototypes and Matt's work on that, so that's my update for this evening.
Great, thank you, Katie. Any commissioners' reports?
I don't have a report, I just have one comment I would like to say. Um, in my particular neighborhood, we've had several people recently put in generator systems that come on automatically when the power goes out. And since we all live so close together, it's become a bit of a noise issue. So I was wondering if at some point Katie or the building official could come back and tell us, you know, what's sort of required to put in these generators, and if there's any way we can at least have some minimum noise standard for them, or have them do some noise insulation.
I can do that.
So that's my comment.
Yeah, I think you have to, don't you have to run them once a month for maintenance? I believe you do.
Yeah, and I understand, you know, why people want them and need them, it just seems like we could perhaps do a little better job so they don't become a neighborhood problem.
Okay, thank you, Susan. Anyone else?
Do they require a planning permit?
I don't think so, I think they only require a building permit.
That's correct.
And I don't think we have any jurisdiction over that.
Yeah, we just look at them to see if they're in the setbacks, and that's about it. But we can take a look and see if we could have some oversight.
I think other cities do have some noise limits and installation, noise insulation requirements.
But that's a city council matter, not a planning commission uh item.
But we could recommend to them.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Susan. Anything else from anyone? Last chance? Hearing nothing? We'll adjourn the meeting to our next meeting in June. Thank you, Katie. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Goodbye.